Good evening, this is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. It's Tuesday, February 24th. I'm just gonna make a quick announcement. We do have some work going on on the alarm system in the building, so if you see flashing lights or hear any sound, don't panic, it's just a test. We have motion to approve the minutes of the February 10, 2015 regular meeting.
Soo.
Hi, Deirdre.
Second.
Hi, Lisa. And in discussion, we've had a couple of corrections. Anything else? Are all those in favor? To the anonymous, we have one abstention, Burns. We have an opportunity for public comment. Is there any public, significant comment at this time? Approach the microphone and state your name.
My name is Ron Goldman. And I-
Oh, he's so sorry about this.
I wanted to make a comment on an issue that's very important, and that is the early school start times. I understand that the board has already given some consideration to this issue, and there's been a non-voting discussion. I was prompted to come here and comment because I'm a physician and a mental health professional, I'm a psychiatrist, and I was prompted just by some of my recent reading in the literature. There's a growing body of literature, both synopsis here in the psychiatric literature and pediatric literature, showing that, you know, our high school students and middle school age students are chronically sleep deprived. It's a nationwide problem, and there are many reasons for this, but one that is getting more and more attention across the country and I think should be a focus of our work locally is the issue of chronic sleep deprivation due to kids just having to wake up really early in the morning. My understanding is that, yeah, there's a wide variation of school start times in this country. There are a number of school districts, including some very large districts, for example, Fairbanks County in Virginia, that have actually taken this to the public forum and have made some changes. And there's also a growing body of research that shows in districts that have made changes or in school districts where we compare them to neighboring counties in the same states. There's some significant improvement in a number of variables, including the obvious things like academic performance, a decrease in reported incidents of depression. Sleep deprivation has a clear effect in teens on their impulsiveness, on their tendency towards risky behavior, et cetera. The other area where there's some specific data is actually in the issue of car accidents. School districts that have significantly later start times have been shown to have fewer, or I should say counties, because there's no regional, there are fewer accidents related to teen driving. So, yeah, you know, again, I want to thank the school board for taking this issue on and giving it some serious consideration. There was a recent, much of the board's aware, there was a recent policy statement from the American Academy of Pediatrics about this issue, which has a good summary of the findings. And, you know, I just want to read from here in particular. You know, they note that sleep deprivation in teens leads to a number of problems, including depressed mood, deficits in learning, attention and memory problems, poor impulse control, academic performance deficits, an increased risk of fall asleep motor vehicle crashes, and an elevated risk of obesity, hypertension, long-term cardiovascular morbidity. All of these things are important, and again, we should consider that we're sort of setting the stage for our middle and high school students to become responsible adults, to take care of themselves. We live in a society where many of us are chronically sleep deprived, for sure, and we want our kids to sort of, you know, step into the world on the right foot and healthy footing, and I think by taking this seriously, we can, you know, we can show them that good sleep habits are important. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to make a comment? Okay. We'll move on to nominations and elections for the Dutchess BOSIS Board.
Yeah, in your packet, there is a, pleasure, there is a notice that we received recently regarding election of board members to the BOSIS Board. I'd point a couple of things out to you. First of all, Rhinebeck is one of nine component school districts that does not currently have a representative on the BOSIS Board, therefore, our district is eligible to prefer a name for potential election to that board. So you're aware, the nomination deadline is March 11th, so if anybody from this board and the majority of the board were to nominate somebody, we would have to do it no later than our next meeting on March 10th, just so you have the timeline. Whether we nominate someone or not, the BOSIS Annual Meeting is April 8th, at which time the nominees will be introduced, and then mark your calendars, April 21st, which I don't believe is one of our regular meetings, I think that would require a special meeting, albeit a relatively short one, is the voting day for voting, not only on BOSIS Board members, but also on the BOSIS administrative budget, so just something to mark on your calendars. My guess is that meeting, unless we have other business to conduct that evening, probably wouldn't take much more than 10 or 15 minutes, if that long, but that's the only day we can vote, and I'm sure this board, as in past years, is desirous of voting on the BOSIS budget as well as the BOSIS Board members. So, it's a lot wrapped up in there. Those are the deadlines. If you have any questions about nominating somebody, please let me know or let Mary Anne know. We have, at one time, one of our board members, Arthur Pritchard, was also a member of the BOSIS Board. My understanding is that you don't have to be a member of a school district Board of Education to be elected as a member of the BOSIS Board, so it could be somebody from the community who might best serve the interests of the BOSIS consortium as one of their board members. So if you have anybody in mind, let me know, certainly raise it no later than the March 10th board meeting, so we can vote on it.
Any questions on that? Okay. Chancellor's report.
Good evening, everyone. A few things happening at chancellor. I kind of, in addition to some of the running items I reported on, I kind of chose to highlight a few community exposure type things at chancellor this time around, but I felt it bounced well off of my last principal report about a lot of the things that we do out in the community. So starting off, as always, I'd like to give you a BLPT news update. I mentioned the Olvea survey, which is a bullying survey to kind of get an idea of change perceptions in the building. We're gonna be working with three, four, five. We just met yesterday as a group, the BLPT, to pick up where we left off last time. At this point, we have 250 surveys waiting in the wings to, you know, students are identified by number, so we have 250 surveys that we're gonna administer soon. That was actually an early step, believe it or not, a lot of times that might be the latest step set up the format. Allison Vacarino and myself already did that with the representatives from Olvea's, with the intention of taking back to the BLPT, which we discussed yesterday, a few things. So currently, we're working on creating a few building-specific questions to include. We have an opportunity in that survey to delete any we think, you know, may not be appropriate for our students, but also there's two spaces to create any question we want that's building-specific. So we're working on a few things that we thought was kind of a shortcoming of that survey, specifically being, one of the questions we're throwing around, it's been around, you know, have you ever been bullied or called names as a result of not having some material object, or something along those lines, I'm gonna paraphrase, I've been coming up with a few versions, and we felt that that was something, it didn't really address that idea of, you know, perhaps students be bullied because of their socioeconomic class, and we felt that was something that was missing. So, that was actually one of the things we really liked about working with this group, that we had some way of modifying some of these questions for our own need. So that's one. We're also working on developing, they had a boilerplate passive consent letter, but we're working on developing that letter further to not only allow parents to opt out if they feel appropriate, but also to take the opportunity to explain what the program is, you know, although it is a program, we're not at that stage, we're just working on a survey, and what we're gonna kind of do with that information is let parents know. And then third, putting together with the help of Olvea's, an FAQ sheet that we can also send home and just frequently ask questions and address that with families. So, that's one of our big items that we're working on. The goal is, we're meeting probably in about three more weeks to come back in a short cycle, just so we can kind of nail down the dates and the administration information. So, that's where I'm at with that. Also, School Spirit Day, the next one is Friday, March 14th, it's Crazy Hat Day. And if anyone's watching, I have a giant Viking hat with like long beard and curls and stuff, I've had it for like two months, I bought it for that specific day. It almost became the hat on our snowman at my house, and I refused to allow it to happen.
You're gonna have to tweet that out, Jim.
Yeah, yeah. So, moving on, I just wanted to let you know, it's a little bit late, but I didn't get to really report on it, it happened after my last report. In the December 31st, January 6th edition of Northern Dutchess News, we were schooled the week once again, for Ms. Rizalos' third grade class in Sandy Kane, had brought the students to visit residents and staff at Wells Manor and Friendship Center at the Church of Good Shepherd, and students St. Carol's presented homemade ornaments and cards, and the spread is really awesome, if you didn't get to see it, I apologize, I didn't bring a copy with me, but that is something we do pretty much every year. We get to visit multiple, you know, resident programs in the area, and it's just what the kids get out of it, what the residents and staff get out of it are amazing, so I wanted to bring that up. Also, I wanted to focus on one of our most recent, not only building initiatives, but recent events, which I think was one of the most successful we've had in a long time, Science Night Out and the STEM Lab ribbon cutting, the celebration of that environment we've been able to create at chancellor, which, in addition to everyone else, I want to thank. Obviously, I want to thank all of you for that support, for getting that going, and David Wolfin for just grabbing that and working with my staff. My staff has just bought into it, it's been a great experience, and that night was wonderful. I, you know, I wanted to thank the RSF. It happened on January 22nd, we had a great turnout, I don't think David Wolfin left the lab the whole time, which is great, I mean, he never got down to the Science Night Out, but it was just, he was so busy showcasing the lab, and people just kept coming, it was great. So again, I wanted to thank RSF, the Bard students, middle schoolers who helped the Bard students first time we did that, it was great, the CLS students from various grades that came in and demoed in the STEM Lab, which some of them never even got out of the lab, which was, which again, was a great, just showing of how wonderful the night was. So, and we also, by the way, again, kind of community exposure, January 30th to February 4th edition of the River Chronicle featured like a two-page spread that is posted, by the way, all over my building, especially on my office door, really great stuff. Moving on, wanted to let you know, PE news, which has been an item on my principal report a couple of times, the two gentlemen that have taken over the PE department have really, really taken that goal of communication that the board told, like, to heart, and two specific examples of them doing that. One, they began a Student of the Month initiative, where we celebrate those students during announcements. Students that exhibit leadership, good sportsmanship, follow rules, consistent effort, always prepared for class. Each month, we choose one male, one female, they receive a certificate of acknowledgement, we, like I mentioned, announce their names over the morning announcements. They also get their name on a Phys Ed Student of the Month poster that's hanging in our gym, and a picture on the PE website, which we get approval for, by the way. And in addition, they also started creating, and this week, it's gonna go out on the back of my parent newsletter, a PE monthly newsletter to accompany our parent newsletter, just to kind of give information about what they're doing, shout-outs to students, things like that. Two wonderful additions to the building, they're really kind of taking that initiative and communication series, which I commend the board. In addition, February 13th to the 19th edition of the River Chronicle, once again, had a piece on our Folk Heritage Festival that I report out on every year, occurred on the evening of February 2nd, had a double-page spread with colored photos and captions, really great. They've been really good about reaching out to me and back and forth, so we've been able to get them to two events, which is wonderful. I am on the Health and Wellness Committee, I just wanted to mention that there was, we had planned a parent academy a while back at the middle school, high school. It was the first year we did it, but it was successful based on just the things that we were presenting, so we're working on planning one for a chancellor. It won't be on a Saturday, but it will be after school on a Thursday to, you know, after, usually after work hours for parents. We're looking at, we're gonna focus on nutrition and social media, are the two real big things. Larry Anthony will join us, and we're getting some panels like we did in the last round. We're also coupling it with a student, our show, Three, Four, Five, to just kind of make it go ahead. And that's gonna probably happen on March 19th, and just stay tuned, I'll have more info for that. And a few upcoming events, PTSO, School Assembly Book Fair we do each year starts next week on the 2nd, and Engineers Week, which we do every year, a partnership with a group of engineers from IBM, they come and work with our students, are gonna be actually working second through fifth grade this year, which is great, and we're just still planning the details, probably happens sometime in May, so I'll give more information on that.
Questions for Mr. King? Okay, thank you.
As a follow-up to the presentation that was given to the Board of Education last month, I hope that all of you were able to get an opportunity to view the gallery display that we had of the eighth grade student project. As you recall, the project was titled Taking a Stand: Civil Rights in America, and working with local artists, students had an opportunity to explore social injustice through art, and subsequently had an opportunity to create their own pieces. We estimated that we had between 60 and 70 guests that attended that evening, far more than we had last year, the first time that we did this, so we were very, very pleased with the turnout. And in addition to that unintended consequences, as a result of the number of postponements of our choral concert, we had an opportunity for all of our parents, six through eight, parents of those students that participate in chorus, to view the pieces the following evening prior to the chorus concert. So, a lot of view, a lot of exposure, and it's certainly something DK and I have spoken about this already, looking to continue the project next year, and have some very, very interesting ideas of ways to expand it. Recently, the PTSO held its annual book fair. Thanks to the hard work of Kelly Toussaint, Patty McNulty, and Deidre Dabert, once again, and several other PTSO members, we had more than $1,100 worth of books donated to our libraries, our classrooms. I believe that just about all, if not all, of our teacher wish lists were able to be filled, and then in addition to that, more books donated to the library. And in addition to that, Line Book Week at Oblong Books ended just yesterday, we don't know the results of that yet, but again, just another fundraiser that provides a great opportunity to get books into our schools and into the hands of our students, get books into the hands of our students. Earlier this month, as I said before, the Winter Choral Concert finally took place. I think we had two postponements, I believe, due to weather. Ms. Lulicky created several programs, unfortunately, she always puts the date on the front of those programs, so she finally gave up. She titled the concert Take Three, and she said enough was enough, she was done. And Mr. Brunel was in charge of school closings, delays, early dismissals that week, and though we had a few flurries that afternoon, there was no way that we were going to cancel any evening activities. As always, the students did a fantastic job. The grand finale really highlighted the evening, 115 students, music, student musicians and singers singing Ozzy Osbourne's Crazy Train. The next three BMS students have been recognized in the Catching Kids Caring Program. I've mentioned this once before, as you'll recall, the Catching Kids Caring Program is sponsored by the Kiwanis Club of Poughkeepsie, and offers us an opportunity to recognize students for demonstration of positive character and leadership throughout the school. Thanks to the support of Oblong Books, BMS will continue to recognize three students, one at each grade level, per quarter throughout the rest of the year. The BMS Anthropology Club is hard at work on its next project. Members are working with local documentarian Seth Kramer, as well as Peter Musty and several other community members, to create a documentary video comparing how children their age spent their free time and their after-school hours 50 years ago versus today. The project is gonna begin this Saturday, they will be interviewing a number of lifelong Rhinebeck residents to talk a little bit about their childhood. They hope to compile some ideas and intend to identify some potential community deficiencies, really isn't the right word, so perhaps opportunities, and make a presentation to the town board, so we're really excited to see how that turns out. Recently, representatives from the Grace Smith House came in and spoke to our seventh grade health classes, they conducted presentations on abusive dating violence versus healthy and harmful, healthy versus harmful relationships. And additionally, representatives from the Council on Addiction Prevention and Education will conduct presentations on both alcohol substance use and abuse and marijuana substance use and abuse later this month. Couple of upcoming events and annual events. Next Monday, March 2nd, BMS will hold its sixth annual at this point, it's hard to believe that we've been doing this that long, Top Chef Competition. As you recall, the activity was started years ago to encourage healthy choices, balanced nutrition, serving size awareness, and label reading, to bridge students with members of the local culinary community, and to develop a sense of teamwork bonding in the community amongst students with like interests. Once again, entries will be submitted and compete in one of three categories, main dish, side dish, and dessert. We have celebrity judges from a number of restaurants in Rhinebeck, Tarikin, Rhinebeck Bagels, La Petite Bistro, Calico, as well as a number of culinary grads, some faculty members, staff members, perhaps even Dr. Davenport again this year, and several parents. And finally, March 20th is Artist in Action Day. The goal of this day has always been to partner with community members and parents to expose students to a variety of new activities and to provide experiences that enable students to imagine creative possibilities for themselves. Kathleen White will serve as our keynote presenter this year. Ms. White is manager of the William Holman Gallery in New York City, for whose owner has ties to Rhinebeck and represents the state ball and douse. Her address will be followed by small group presentations on a variety of subjects, including, among others, publishing, pottery, photography, theater, painting, and the use of special effects software. A few of the things going on at BMS.
Can I just ask, what, the documentary video project with Peter Musty, what, is that affiliated with a class or a club?
Anthropology Club.
Oh, the Anthropology, okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'd like to begin this evening with some extracurricular updates. Forgive me if this is due to my poor memory, but I wanted to remind the board to announce that rehearsals are in full swing for this musical, anything goes. And if you have a moment, as you're wandering around the building and competing in the auditorium, the Proscenium Arch has been established, has been constructed, and that is completely student work in terms of the design and the outline, so we're looking forward to another spring musical. The Environmental Club hosted a benefit concert several weeks ago, featuring some vocal bands, one from BMS, one comprised of some alums from Rhinebeck and some bands from farther afield. They raised over $1,000 for a bowl of research, which was donated to UNICEF. Several weeks ago, we had a pilot of co-writing opportunity, the Rhinebeck High School Creative Writing Club partnered with the Klein Plains Creative Writing Club in a place-based writing activity. The students gathered, collaborated, went to various locations in the village to engage in place-based writing, returned to our campus to workshop their texts and to continue their collaboration. It was a great experience for students, a lot of friendships were forged, and we look forward to continuing that tradition next year. The Spanish Club recently completed a donation project, they spent about half of their earnings from various fundraisers, including their taco stand and candy grams, to purchase care packages for local families who need, you know, local demand community. One of our students placed second in the jury best of local high schools show, it was hosted at Columbia Green College. The National Honor Society hosted a blood drive several weeks ago, 30 pints of blood were donated. The Debate Club will be traveling this Friday to attend a debate tournament at Bard, and we're in the midst of Spirit Week, the student council decided that in this record-setting winter would be a good idea to stow some spirit, so this is Spirit Week, today was Twin Day, I believe, and we're culminating with a pep rally this Friday at the end of the day. We short periods by six to seven minutes with the support and cooperation of BMS, carve out about an hour of time at the end of the school day for the student council and our students to host a pep rally. I think this is our fourth or fifth pep rally, I can remember the first pep rally, I was a nervous wreck, and at this point, I leave it in the good hands of our student council advisor and our student council, and look forward to the student activities on Friday. In BLPT news, the building level planning community faculty have finalized the recommendation for us to end the practice of recording numerical rank based on weighted GPA on transcripts. The rationale for this move is that this practice makes academic achievement appear to be a scarce commodity, limited to only a few students. Furthermore, the research of the BLPT has revealed that the use of class rank in college admissions is not as important as it used to be. Fewer, about half of the schools of our size, 500 or enrollment of 500 or fewer, but half of the schools no longer rank students, so the recommendation is to end this practice to send a message to students that academic achievement is something that all students have available to them. The BLPT is drafting a system based on a college Latin honor system to recognize academic achievement, and we will denote students who are at the summa cum laude, magna cum laude, cum laude level based on grade ranges of their weighted GPAs, and these grade ranges are going to be parallel to how we recognize students for honor roll, high honor roll, honorable mention. And those designations will appear both on the students' transcripts as well as on their diplomas. In academic news, you may remember that in September, I described some training we received from Heidi Benjamin regarding academic word lists. As you recall, academic word lists are academic words that appear with high frequency in academic texts but are not part of the vocabulary of most students. So the faculty thought the best way to pilot the use of the academic word list was to introduce an academic word of the week, which we begin in the second semester. The academic word of the week is announced every morning along with its definition, it's posted throughout the building, and features in the various content areas, incorporate the academic word of the week as appropriate within their lessons. So at the end of this semester, the faculty will debrief and determine what the next best step is for training our students with the academic word list. We have a guest speaker from High Guitars coming in, thanks to the PTSO and the grant from the RSF, who's going to work with our Music in Our Lives students to explore the capabilities- of High Guitars. Mrs. Natalie is also going to make this opportunity available to any student who's interested in exploring High Guitar. So we thank the PTSO and RSF for their support. Renowned children's author, Eric Walters, visited our school seven years ago. He's the author of over eighty children's books. And he spoke with our freshmen and with our seniors about his career and about the process of helping childrens. The Science Department, AP Chem students, have been teaching many lessons on topics in chemistry. Our chemistry teacher has invited me and all of his colleagues in the Science Department sitting on these classes, have been in a couple, and it's very impressive to see the deflency with which our students can explain very difficult concepts, which I struggle to understand. We received notification that one of our seniors has been named a National Merit Scholarship finalist. Scholarship finalists number about fifteen thousand out of the one and a half million students who take the BLPT. So we congratulate the students' hard work. Art department, students in Mr. King's building in first grade and third grade competed black and white drawings with certain themes. Art students in Mrs. Giles' drawing and photo classes then photographed these drawings using library iPads, and then they returned to the art studio app on their iPads to finish the drawing, which means they added color, added some refinements to them. So it was a nice collaboration between elementary school students as well as high school students. We look forward to that continuing in the future. Along the lines of high school and elementary school collaboration, our high school band will be with Mr. King's permission, will be playing for the elementary school on March 25th with the support of the PTSO in terms of transporting the students back and forth in time of the fashion. And finally, despite the fact of our being in a record-setting winter in terms of temperature and snowfall, I take some consolation in announcing that the spring sports season begins on March 25th.
What, 2016?
[laughing]
Thanks. And so what's the process for, you're saying the BLPT is planning to make this recommendation, and what's the process going forward for that?
Well, as a next step, we'll have a little bit more time to solicit feedback as this proposal has become public, both from faculty, from students and from parents. If we need to revisit, refine, change in some fashion, we'll continue to draft, assuming that we have green lights and people are satisfied with the input they've provided. The next step would be to share this information, certainly with the students and also with parents towards the end of the school year. The recommendation is to begin the practice of, or end the practice of having a class rank in the transcript, starting in September 2015. So we're continuing to get input. As I've mentioned, the BLPT and the faculty have worked together on this proposal. So we're still at an information gathering stage.
Okay, great. And what's the academic word of the week?
This week?
This week?
Is the compound.
Compound?
Yeah, both the plural form and the non- plural form.
Thank you.
It's alphabetical. Last week it was capacity.
Very good.
Before that was clause.
So you can keep remembering them. Very good. Thank you.
Lisa.
Just wanted to know if the band's going to be performing at the pep rally on Friday? I know they were supposed to in previous, but...
Yes, thank you. And that reminded, our band will be traveling to Marist on a field trip to both listen to the college musicians and to perform for the conductor there. And speaking with Mrs. Natalie, her sense is that the students will be back in time to perform for the pep rally.
Thanks.
So that's very important, because you can't hope that for a rally without a pep man.
Thank you very much.
Diane.
Just more of a comment. I think the word of the week was on Twitter than parents.
That's a good idea.
You read my mind. I was just sending Dr. Davenport an email about that.
Done.
I'm sure there's a question or a comment. I just want to say how appreciative I am of the work that the BLPT, along with you and your faculty, have bringing to this issue about the class rank, change of numerical class rank, and how important it is that there's this sort of open period of gathering feedback. And I think it's very much appreciated broadly in the community. And also, it just seems like with any change of this kind, making really clear what the process will be for people trying to navigate that in the short term will be important. So that kind of communication, please.
And if I could, I should say as well that we will continue to retain the ability to calculate a rank as needed, and indeed, we must learn to identify about it during the fall of the year.
Right.
And if students need to have a class rank for an application or a scholarship application, the guys are still be able to furnish that information. We're proposing, the BLPT fact, to not report that as a matter of course on the transcript.
Lisa.
This is not about your report, but just for the next item on the agenda, since at least the principals' practices may have some bearing on our discussion, I'm wondering if the principals would be able to stay for that discussion.
Principals, would you be able to stay for that discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your reports. Next item is discussion of immunization exemptions.
Okay. With all principals on deck, thank you very much for staying. In response to a request for some data, I provided you with a breakdown of both medical and religious exemptions from immunization requirements for the current year by grade. And in addition to that data, I did provide you with, not only with copies of the articles that appeared in two of our local papers recently, but also information from the New York State Department of Health. And this afternoon, as well as hard copy at your place tonight, a copy of a State Education Department document that our building principals use for processing religious exemptions to immunizations. I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to see that before you came to the meeting, but it's in hard copy at your place. And in collecting the information from our principals and by them, from our school nurses, they did note that a fairly large number of those religious exemptions are from a fairly limited number of families. So in a number of cases, as I noted at the bottom with the asterisk, that a number of families contribute to that overall number, for whatever that's worth. And I did meet with the building principals this afternoon, since they process these at the building level. Typically, these requests are processed when a child is entering school, and in most cases, that means when they're entering kindergarten, even though we do have children enter at other grade levels, including at the middle school level and the high school level occasionally, but primarily it's elementary school centric. So, you know, Mr. King has probably had more experience in his time here in terms of numbers of, processing numbers of exemptions than either Mr. Kennitzer or Dr. Davenport. But that being the case, and I'll let either you ask questions or them chime in at any point, but based on our discussion this afternoon, the process that we use is to not only have the parents complete that form in writing, but then to also meet with the building principal to discuss the response to the form. And if the building principal feels that there's a need for further documentation, as you can see from the State Education Department form that is at your place this evening, there are certain documents or affidavits that the building principals can choose to request if they are not convinced of the validity and legitimacy of the original request. That's, you know, that's submitted, and that's pretty much the process, as I understand it. But I certainly welcome our three building principals to amplify that in any way they might wish, or if you have questions of them, I'm sure they'll take a shot at it.
Question I have is, does this form get filled out once, or is it filled out every time, you know, you have to provide accommodation different times for the kids schooling? So it's just once?
Yeah, it's just once for each religious register your child, just like you give us your immunizations that first time. And it's one for each student, each child, so it is not one that accompanies, you know, someone has four children. We need actually a form for each child, but they only do it once with children.
Lisa.
So Brett, since you've been sort of singled out as the person who's done the most, this the most, I'm going to ask you, could you walk us through your process of evaluating requests for religious exemptions from the beginning to the end of the process?
Sure. Sure, a few of these. So, yeah, when someone registers their child, as far as immunizations are concerned, one of like three things pretty much happen. You either, you know, come with your immunizations, or you're in the process of getting them and you have to give us like a list of the appointments through your doctor, and then my office, my health office does follow up with the doctor, make sure that's okay. And the third is an immunization exemption request, which, that form, you know, comes to me, I make an appointment with the family, and then they'll come sit down with that kind of all filled out, primarily, as you see, there's a sheet where they're able to write down, specifically written on the sheet, what their exemption, you know, what their religious reason for the exemption is. I really get a lot of different variations of that. Sometimes I get multiple pages, sometimes it's, you know, it's enough to fit on that form. Very often, you know, people might quote scripture, things like that, but, you know, basically, we sit down and just go over what their reason is. I read it right there with them. And just really, you know, the main thing that, you know, there are some states that are different, but in New York State, it's strictly religious or medical, which is a nice story. Process is similar where they present, you know, it may be a different form. A lot of times, the health office takes over that because they obviously can gauge that legitimacy and they go through the process to make sure we've got it in place. So primarily, that's it. I'll sit down with them, we'll talk about what they wrote, the reason for the exemption. Primarily, for me, I'm looking for anything other than that, you know, as far as their explanation. If, as you can see, there's another page there that if, and Joe touched on it quickly, if for any reason I think, hmm, this isn't really true, or, you know, they're not genuine, I could certainly request, I haven't up to this point, something from their religious institution, kind of backing their statement and that they're a part of this institution, which again, isn't one of the requirements they necessarily have to. It could be religion, they don't, aren't part of an organized organization, but, you know, but anyway, it has to be a religious reason, that's pretty strict as far as the state regulations.
Have you denied any requests for religious exemptions?
I have not in my time here, no. There hasn't been any real, any fair reason for me to ever think that anything that people are right. That's why I kind of go, the main part is I go through what they write and refine to make sure it matches what the expectation, which is strictly religious.
Okay, but I want to understand this. You said that your experience has been that you have not asked for material other than what's been presented to you by the parents requesting the exemption. So is what you're saying that in all the cases, you've been given material that's sufficient to satisfy any questions you may have?
Yep.
Or just that as a matter of your practice, you are willing to accept what people say their reasoning is?
Well, I don't have really a, there's no reason to think otherwise unless they are putting something down that's specifically contrary to a religious exemption. You know, in all honesty, not in a position to question their faith or anything of that nature, I'm going by what they wrote there. So, yeah, there's never been any flags that have popped up. I explained the whole process to, you know, what the state and what I expect when they're sitting down with, you know, a coach and before they come, but when they come, they follow that form. And, yeah, there hasn't in my six years, there hasn't been any reason to request anything additional over and above what they give me as the specific reason. And that reason does, the length of that reason varies, but that's pretty much what I take a look at and that we discuss when they sit with me.
So the only people who present a request for an exemption that you've talked with are people who bring forth these religious exemptions?
Yeah, 100%.
They don't know other kinds of reasons?
Well, I would assume medical exemptions would probably go to your school nurse.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 okay.
I bring her in immediately.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And there's no exemption other than those two from the New York State.
Those two that are recognized by the state of New York.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Diane.
Do you feel like it would make it easier for you if supporting documentation was required?
If the state mandated it, it would make it harder for people to just literally write that I have religious reasons based on this, that and the other, sure. But right now, it's really not mandated by the state to do that.
Right, you can request a supporting documentation.
We can, if we...
If we've always requested that documentation.
That's right.
Would that make it easier for you?
Obviously, sure. Yeah, I mean, if there was a policy that, you know, locally, we make that a requirement, obviously we have legal to make sure we can do that as an initial step. But right now, it's more of if there's a doubt on my end, request it. So it might, you know, just add additional documentation to that.
Lisa.
Understanding that you're the person who's dealt with this the most, have either of your colleagues dealt with this issue? And what's your experience been? Is it consistent with Brett's or different?
Yeah, I mean, the only two experiences I have have been families moving into our district in both cases, for whatever reason, out of state. Families with multiple students in the district that already inherit with them a religious exemption that were granted out of state. Again, you know, in both cases, I believe, they presented me with the information that they presented to get the religious exemption the first time around, as well as fill out the New York State law. In nine and a half years or so, two instances of parents moving into the district have requested the exemption based on religious reasons. The process is the same as Mr. King's. My understanding is that it must be based on a religious belief that sincerely helps. So the parents documented that, verified that, the hierarchy.
And when you say documented, they wrote out on the form?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Move on to our 2015-16 budget development update.
I'll let Tom address some handful of changes that have been made since the last board meeting based on additional information that's been generated, so we'll pass those down to you.
At the last meeting, we went through the entire budget, being the first and second draft, since the first draft wasn't available, and the next day we got snowed out. And so presented the first and the second draft, and that second draft accounted for the five teacher retirements and a lowering of the teacher retirement system employer contribution rate. So that got us down to a 4.9% tax levy. As you know, our tax levy is 2.18, so we had a short... As you know, our tax levy is 2.18, so we had a shortfall of over $700,000. As we went into, since last time, we have gotten three pieces of information that's helped to lower this current budget. And if you go to the second page, the first one being the teacher salaries, this is for one teacher who, at the last meeting, was granted a leave of absence for next year.
Unpaid leave of absence.
Unpaid leave of absence, so that was taken out of the budget, but putting in a leave replacement, and that saved roughly $20,000. A second person was also granted a leave for next year without pay, but since she is at a low step to begin with, there's no breakage in it. That's, her salary is exactly the salary I would budget for, for a long-term sub, so no breakage on that one. When we get to the next line, which is health insurance, you see a deduction for $82,000. At last week's D-HIC meeting, at that meeting, it was determined that rates would not be more than at least 6% next year, and it may even go lower than that. We know it won't be above 6. So, I had originally budgeted at 8%, so this 2% drop, so I reduced it from 8% to 6%, gave us a savings of $82,000, which could still go lower. We have, March 11th is the date in which that would be set, but I should know, I think it's March 2nd for sure, because I have a discussion with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and really basically set the rates then, but they won't be voted on until the March 11th D-HIC meeting. The next one is workers' compensation. I had a meeting on Friday with our workers' comp insurance consortium, and our experience has been very good for the past year, which was really good to see. So, I was able to reduce our rates by $7,500, which, you know, overall, was about a 3.5% decrease in what I projected. So, and so this third draft was reduced an additional $109,500, which brings our budget to budget to 3.7%. The tax levy is at 4.48, okay, and our tax levy limit is 2.18. So that still puts us slightly below $600,000 as that delta to reach that tax levy limit. There's still a number of things that are still in play, state aid being one of them. Don't really know what that number is, you know. I'd love to see great news and see the gap elimination eliminated, and I'll be jumping up and down in joy. We all will, but at this point, I can't guarantee that. That is my wish. When I go to bed at night, that is one of the things I wish for, is that we wake up the next morning and see that New York State has approved a budget and eliminated gap elimination. That would be very helpful, not only to us, but all districts across New York State. So, there's that still in play. We are fine tuning. The principals and department heads are putting together lists last time about, you know, potential cuts, and whether we need to enact them this year, or we're getting to the point where we're getting closer, whether it be this year, next year, the year after, we're having to really update that list, because it's been three years since we've had to look at that list, so we have a lot of updating to do. The principals are actively going through and compiling new lists. Hope we won't have to pull it out, we want to be ready just in case. There, we're still going through, fine tuning it, but it's, you know, we can squeeze some more money out, but, you know, state aid is a big one right now, finding out where that is actually, you know, is going to come in at, and hopefully, there is something. Unfortunately, we really don't know at this point, you know, what it is, and one of the things I will be doing later this week is going through the excess cost aid, which is for our special ed students, who we've had a large number of students this year. I'm going to go through and try to figure that out myself, because that's a big number for us, that will help reduce the budget and have nothing to do with state aid runs. This is money that we know we'll be receiving.
That it's expenses.
Based on current people in there. And if the expenses go away, well, fine, that's, if I'm not paying it out, I don't expect revenue coming in, which is fine with me, but I'm going to try to gauge what that number is, because that will go a long way towards, you know, reducing that $600,000. So.
Lisa.
I have two questions. First question is, what do you think that the drop dead date is for us to start the process of, you know, on the board level, of evaluating cuts? If we don't have information on state aid, when do we have to start to do that?
Hmm, that's a good question. I would say we'd really have to really, really start looking at the second meeting in March to really, you know, I don't want to put anybody in a panic either unnecessarily, but that's why we're putting these lists together. I would think the second meeting in March would be one in which those discussions really have to be dealt in earnest.
Will we have to make decisions at that meeting?
No, you won't have to make decisions at that meeting. Actually, really, the kind of the drop dead date of adopting a budget, really, is that April 21st meeting for BOSIs? That's basically the last, about the last day that it can be done for it to be, go through it, but, you know, if we had to do it to that late, you know, I think it's April 14th, but I can't remember.
Yeah, April 14th is what we set as the date for adopting a budget on our budget calendar, but we have additional time, according to the state, for doing that.
That's our local date.
Yeah, and I think there have been a few times in the past where we've pushed that out, and in this case, it would be on that date when we're going to have to meet anyway to vote on the BOSIs budget, so more than likely, we'll, we'd probably benefit from a little extra time. The other date that's, that I think is, might want to consider changing, is we had planned on March 7th as our budget workshop, and I'm, realistically, I'm not sure we'll have information on potential cuts by then. I mean, we want to, we want to go through that process in a deliberate fashion and not just rush it and slap something together. So the board may want to give some thought to rescheduling that March 7th meeting to either March 14th or March 21st. For whatever it's worth, I polled the administrators, who by practice attend that meeting, so they're there for us to ask questions and whatnot, and they are all available on March 21st. Two of our building principals already have prior commitments to March 14th, so we could do it on March 14th, but we wouldn't have the benefit of their expertise there. Tom and I have been kind of going back and forth about pros and cons to the 14th versus the 21st, and my sense at this point would be to wait till the 21st, we'll have better information, it's more likely we'll have better information in terms of state aid than if we did it earlier. At this point, who knows if we'll even have it by the date we have to adopt the budget. I heard something on NPR today about, about the, you know, our governor touting four on-time budgets, and this may be, the fifth time may not be the charm, but that remains to be seen. So my suggestion would be to push that workshop out till the 21st, when we know we'll have more information, and if we push, excuse me, budget adoption out to April 21st, then that'll give us enough time to make any decisions, and hopefully, we'll have a better idea of some of the other costs and state aid, so we won't be making rash decisions prematurely. But that's up to the board to consider, and how it works in your schedules.
And, I haven't added to my second.
You had a second question, yeah.
Okay, and I can hold this until we get to the discussion of the finance committee meeting, but there's a reference in there to state aid runs obtained from Senator Serino's office, and then indicating that state aid would be reduced slightly from last year. And so, I really want to know more about that.
Yeah, well, you know, once again, and the problem with these state aid runs, they're, not all the pieces are together, because excess cost aid is basically showing where it was last year, and we know that that number's going up. So, where these numbers are coming from, some of them are coming from are not good, because we don't get the full detail, all we get is, okay, here's a number. How'd you derive that number?
Where are her numbers coming from?
She's getting them from Albany, and she did get them from Albany, and we looked at them, and it's slightly lower, and it's really for, you know, two reasons. And one reason is, we have fewer children, fewer students, even though this year it went up, the records of last year, we looked like we dropped some, so our textbook and software, that went down, because we have fewer students. But they also look at private parochial too, it's not just students here, it looks at all students in the district. So, that got lower, and that's been lowered every year, just we have fewer students, so we knew that part would be lower. But, you know, excess cost aid was right around where it was, but slightly lower. Don't know, because I, what happened now is, the stack unit, there's different definitions up there, stack is, that's where the special ed students are put in, are kept track of, that's where they generate the excess cost aid. That isn't currently, that's a whole separate system, so it's not, they're not tied in, it's dumping that information into state aid planning at this time. Somewhere along the line, they do match up, but that state aid run, they weren't matched up, because basically, it was the same cost aid from the year before. So I know they're not looking at the current students of Ryanbeck, so, so there was really only one number on there that everybody needed, and that was your building aid. You needed to know what your building aid was so that you complete your tax cap. And that's really the only piece of information on there that was really helpful.
I mean, the state aid runs are flawed in a good year. They're guesstimates in a good year, and they don't, in a good year, they don't include some of the expense-driven aids like the excess cost aid, which for us is going to be, you know, a significant number. We're in the, you know, Tom's in the process of working with the special ed office to kind of guesstimate that, so we'll have at least an idea. And what's missing from these runs at this point is any increase through the governor's budget. So we're holding that flat as it is right now, because we don't know, depending on the politics in Albany, what we're going to get, if anything, from the, from an increase in operating aid. We'll get an increase in our excess cost aid, because we've already spent that money, and we know we're going to get aid on that. So, we're dealing with a more flawed system this year than usual. So at this point, and it's a good point to make for anybody who's just hearing this budget discussion for the first time tonight, is that all those numbers that Tom just rattled off, they're, the calculation is based on flat state aid.
Right, okay.
And that's, you know, we hope that's the worst-case scenario. Could it go down? Could we actually lose aid? I, you know, it's not out of the question, but we know we're going to get an increase in excess cost aid, so even if we lose operating aid, we're going to get more excess cost aid, so maybe the bottom line will still be a plus. It isn't, the plus in state aid isn't always due to the decisions of our governor or our legislature. Sometimes it's just the way the normal expense-driven aids work out, if you can follow that. So, we're just dealing with a less precise, more flawed system than we normally deal with. And we're going with a 0% increase in aid, because it's less clear than it ever is, so...
Once we work up the excess cost aid, then I, you know, if I work it up and, you know, I see that we're, it's $120,000 additional. I mean, I wouldn't go exactly up to $120,000, but I'd be very comfortable putting $100,000 in there, you know, that type of thing, I wouldn't want to go up to the max. There was one other category that did go down, and that was BOSIs aid, and that's because we just have cheaper services with them. It went down, but not humongous, not humongous, but slightly less, but that's...
Deuter?
I'd rather not spend the money.
No, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, you know, it might be appropriate to discuss some of the finance committee minutes at this moment, anyway, because it's about this. We wanted to communicate tonight that, you know, the concern, we do have to be very conservative moving forward, because the politics are really thick right now in Albany and hard to sort out, we don't have good numbers. So, at this moment, as Tom's documents show, you know, we have to pare down almost $600,000 from the current draft budget in order to get underneath the tax cap. And just to share with you some of the discussion at the finance committee, a couple of important points to keep in mind, you know, ahead of our workshop when we get more numbers, is that we talked about that, you know, no wish list items are on the table at all to put in the budget. Also, no hiring of any staff that isn't required already. You recall that we will have to hire probably at least one English language learner teacher because of new regulations regarding how that teaching goes. There've been years when we've had parents advocate for an additional chancellor, teacher chancellor, to reduce class size under the budget the way it stands now. I think the board should be aware that out of the finance committee, we were feeling that that was something that would be completely untenable. And the tier one cuts from a couple of years ago had totaled about $200,000, and they were mostly supplies and equipment, it's an old list, so that's what Joe was saying, that administrators are going to update that list. And so, that's an important piece of information, but that's additional money that we had talked about in the finance committee, that would need to be looked at to possibly be pared back in the budget. So, I think it's important that we're all aware of that. I mean, in some ways, you know, the important thing is there are a lot of moving parts, and at the finance committee, we want to just make sure that the rest of the board is aware of these sort of worst-case scenarios, which are looking pretty bad right now, because whether there's a state budget or not, and years ago, this was the case, year after year after year. Right. You had to pass a budget. Right. So, if you pass a budget with zero increase of state aid, you have to do that, and then you get lucky if it comes in differently. But we should be prepared for these issues and talking about them at these meetings, because the public has to be aware of them. It's been a few years since we've had to really make actual, you know, cuts into the budget, and this may be a year.
I don't know whether hand up first.
And just one other thing, even without the state aid numbers, they're not likely to make up the deficit, you know, the state aid that we get.
Yeah, there's certainly no guarantee that that's going to happen.
It's not going to happen.
Unless gap elimination is, that's a big number for us. I mean, that could bring some hefty numbers back in to us, but I'm not, I'm not optimistic that it would be fully implemented. I'm hoping to get some of that money, but I don't see it fully being restored at this time.
I mean, I think we're taking the attitude that we need to hope for the best and plan for the worst, and that's why this budget process right now is 0% state aid increase. So, we're planning for the worst, and we'll keep our fingers crossed that things are better. And they'll, I'm sure they'll be somewhat better, but whether they'll be that much better or not, that remains to be seen. So we need to have some contingencies in place for that, and we will.
Laura?
So, I, you know, I agree that we have to be as conservative as possible. I would like the discussions around cuts and wish lists and that kind of thing to center around what we want the program to look like, rather than just going through with the red marker and slicing things, because...
with the red marker and slicing things, because we can get to a number. I, I'd hate to run our program in places, you know, we're, we're trying to get to a particular place in the future, and, and to not consider that, because it might be on a wish list or on a cut list, it doesn't seem like a practical way to budget. If we can really keep true to our program and delivering an education to our children, you know, we might need to buy less copy paper, that would be okay, you know, but as long as the principals can be mindful of that when they're going through and making their, their cut lists, I would think that would be the first priority.
Lisa.
Deirdre's comment brought to mind a question, which is, and Deirdre, you, you and Mark may be able to speak to this from your experience, if we find ourselves in a situation where there is no state budget by the time we have to adopt our budget, and subsequent to that, we get a budget with a greater amount of state aid than we were, than we planned for, how does that work for us? What do we do once we have our budget in place?
Well, Tom can speak to it more specifically, but you can't change the budget amount that was passed by the voters.
Yeah, that does...
But it is always important to remember that you're passing, that, you know, we do a very good job, I think, in this district, I hope, that communicating to the public about what is in the budget, so they know what they're voting for when they vote, but just also to know that that's a number people are voting on, not, you know, every line item, but it, it goes back to the taxpayer or...
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of ways that could be handled. First of all, you know, when, when people are in the voting booth, they're, they're agreeing to a spending plan, we will not exceed this number, and, and so, and typically, we're about a million dollars less than what that is, so it should have no impact, because it usually offsetted with the appropriated fund balance, so it kind of, that's that offset there, so we will, no doubt about it, be below that number, but you now have excess revenues coming in. There's a couple of ways it could be handled. First of all, if the board wanted to, they could reduce the taxes to the homeowner in August, so if we got an extra $200,000, you could say, well, we will use that to reduce the, the homeowner's, you know, tax payment, that's, that's one way of doing it. But still, you're not sure, even when it gives you a budget and that's what you expect, you really don't know until you actually get it, and that's, that's the issue here, is, you know, my recommendation would be, we would just take that in as revenue, and then when we do the budget planning for the following year, if that's going to add to the fund balance, well, that's something that could be used helpful in future years' budgets. But it's, you know, because it's been a couple of years since we added to the fund balance, not that I would look to, I like to keep that even keel, and that's what I want it to be, I try to make expenditures or revenues really match each other. But there, it isn't, and there is a third possibility. If, let's say you had $3 million as state aid in your budget plan, and the state comes with $200,000 in addition to it, the board could accept that as new monies and increase the budget. At the same time, you can increase your expenditure side. It's just like a gift, like when you get gifts from the PTSO or Rhinebeck Science Foundation, we actually are increasing the budget, because these are monies that weren't expected. So you increase the budget by $30,000 on the revenue side for this new income, and you increase your expenditure budget by $30,000 to accommodate what that money's used for. So if you get an extra, most school districts don't do it, but it is a possibility, they wouldn't do it for small amounts, but if you get a big amount of money that's unexpected, you can treat that as new revenues, because budget, we had $3 million, we got $3.2 million. You could increase your budget by $200,000, but then you could restore things too, could restore those parts of the budget. We wouldn't really need to do it, since for usually about a million dollars on the expenditure side, you wouldn't need to go through those lengths, but you could if you, if you were really close, close, and were playing right up to the, your full budget.
Now, when you say you're a million dollars under, you're talking about your, your tolerances in terms of budget planning?
Yep, yep.
So 95% instead of 98%?
Exactly, exactly.
Expenditures.
Because you've got to remember, on the revenue side, there's a million dollars, $1.15 million that I'm never going to collect, because that's from fund balance, that's an appropriated fund balance. It's not new money coming in, it's money we already have, so what you try to do is, since I'm going to be a million dollars short on the revenue side, I want to come in a million dollars short on the expenditure side, so you don't have that fluctuation with fund balance. And nowadays, with the tax cap, if you fluctuate down, I can't say, well, let's collect more revenue next year to help build it, but you just, you can't do that anymore. So it becomes much, much more difficult now to not only maintain your budget, but I can't think of anybody who's actually adding to their fund balances at this time, it's just not happening.
So I, I think the bottom line is that we have to set a budget by mid-April, and in order, you know, we assume that we want to have the budget number below the tax levy cap, and so we have to make decisions on, you know, what items are going to be cut. Hopefully, by the time we have to set a budget, the state budget will be passed, and we'll know what state aid we're going to receive, and, you know, hopefully we can, not, we will not have to cut things that we have on our cut list, but as, as mentioned in the finance committee minutes, you know, we have to develop those cut lists, so that by the time we have to make a decision, we can, you know, have the information in front of us, so.
Yeah, just to, one thing I want to add, another thing that are, is in the minutes is talking about revisions to the technology plan, which the finance committee had already previously raised around the table, which is to go to sort of a Plan B, and I think at the, at the budget workshop, you know, we, we talked in finance, right, about Steve Jensen being present, so at that moment, you know, what does the technology plan look like going forward, some larger questions too about our capacity. Any way to move forward with the plan is that it had previously been iterated, so just to highlight that. And, and then secondly, I'll just say that March 21st makes sense to me, so if we're taking, you know, a poll around the table now, I think that works.
Okay. Anything else on the budget development?
So are we going to change this?
Well, I was, I was going to, later when we get to action items, I was going to recommend that we change those dates. Since the board voted to set up the, the budget calendar, this would be a change to the budget calendar, I'd, I'd recommend that change, and we'll see how the vote goes, but it makes sense to me as well.
I'd like to just comment, that was a very useful discussion and a really clear set of explanations here, so just personally, and I suspect on behalf of the public that's listening or watching, that was useful.
Good. Okay, so we'll move on to board committee reports, start with curriculum.
This is a dual report. I'll do the first half, and I'll let Laura do the second half. We spoke at great length in our last meeting about the curriculum and technology integration planning that's been underway, with a lot of focus on chancellor in particular, and we got into some fairly, you know, what's the term, granular discussion of how that is happening across the grade levels at CLS. Steve Jensen reiterated his basic philosophical position, which has always been that he doesn't see his role as being someone who kind of swoops in and tries to define or control curriculum. He spoke about the sort of command and control model not being what is the approach of our district. His mantra, as he says, is the curriculum should drive instruction, instructions should drive software, and software should drive hardware decisions. That being said, he does see a role moving forward this summer in supporting the work of teachers in the classrooms with technology integration, helping them to make all kinds of decisions, from printing, how to support printing in the particular classrooms, through how they're saving materials, and faculty in the building are really at lots of different places with their learning. We talk about differentiated instruction in terms of communities of lifelong learners, and certainly that's the case here too, in terms of how technology's being integrated into all the other curriculum work that's going on across the grades. We talked for a while about the transition, students negotiate between moving from the elementary school up to the middle school. There isn't a uniformity of skills that is being seen by the sixth-grade teachers, and there was some conversation about how that might be addressed, that could be explained partially by the different experiences students are having in different classrooms, it could have to do with how families integrate technology into their own households, and there can even be a sort of economic factor of familiarity and comfort with different kinds of devices. And I think we want to guard against assumptions that all families and all children have access to the same forms of technology. We talked a lot about standards, and of course, ISTI is one sort of benchmark for technology standards for teachers and students in the educational system, but Marvin rather eloquently spoke to the development within content areas and disciplines of standards, for instance, in the teachers of English, the concept of multiple literacies really drives a lot of the conversation around how technology should be used in most classrooms. And as always, Rhinebeck does not believe in buying curriculum out of a box, but tailors for our district and our particular students and mission what it is that's happening in the classroom. We consulted again the question of inconsistencies that were called out in the self-audit across the district in terms of equipment, deployment, and instruction, the need for there to be a safety net for students as we're negotiating this transition is pretty clear. How that safety net would be provided, Steve has lots of good ideas, and he will come forward with more proposals about that in the future. I think as we all know, the superintendent's conference day was dedicated to technology. There was some report on the kind of work that was being done together, specific topics that were being addressed in the different buildings, very, very promising, and we had a visitor, Jen Hamood, who, who joined us for our conversation that day, and she asked some really helpful questions about how do we support teachers in terms of their openness to bringing new forms of technology into their classroom, we had a very good productive discussion about that. Of course, that whole concept of just-in-time technology, where someone could kind of swoop in and, and assist, you know, as, as the new lesson plan was being unfolded with some new piece of equipment, does depend on there being tech support, and Steve spoke with us about the real challenges in terms of the fact that we just haven't added that additional tech person at this point. So do you want to take over and talk about the, the work that was done during the superintendent's conference day on?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about, a little bit about that. So really, after we, we talked about what was going on at chancellor, middle school, many of the middle school teachers wanted to learn about Google apps for the education, which is what the high school teachers had pinpointed as something they weren't particularly interested in, so a lot of the middle school teachers went to that, instead of taking that day for sort of a brainstorming session to determine what they'd like to see in their building and in their classrooms. So Steve is setting up a, a separate time for sort of a visioning session with the middle school, and in your packets, his plan for that discussion and the things they need to talk to are included. And then Marvin brought us back to, you know, some of the great successes of our technology plan in the district, in the form of Project Lead the Way in all three buildings in a relatively short period of time. So the next part of that conversation was the principles of engineering, we're going to be voting on this a little bit later, principles of engineering will be able to satisfy a math credit, because it's a rigorous applied mathematics course. Also, the intro to engineering and design is going to be renamed as design drawing for production, and it can earn an art credit, which opens up at least a, a credit or two for students in the high school to explore other things beyond core courses. I think it's, it's a really great way for them to explore other options. It's also a way to try to enlist some kids who may not have, have thought of themselves as engineers, especially the girls, and trying to get them excited about some of these alternative courses. And very exciting, on March 12th, Marvin and Steve are going to be going down to Scarsdale to visit their Center for Innovation. It's a program that Scarsdale began, they wanted to change the dialogue around public education and promote schools as centers of learning, so it's an open house that day, Steve and Marvin are going to go learn from some of the, the successes in Scarsdale. Next time, we're going to talk about the curriculum documents that are still in the works, and an update on that visit.